To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Joni, can you hear us? Please, everyone, turn on your mics and silence your phones. Joni, can you hear us?
Joni, can you hear us?
Joni, are you there?
No, I think you need a texter.
Testing, Joni?
Should we wave? We just need a signer, sign language, yeah.
Yeah, we need a sign for the signup, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear us now?
Somebody text her.
Joni, if you can hear us, give us a sign.
We can't hear her, she's talking.
Okay.
Is she on mute?
Do we want to go ahead and start?
What happened, remember when we were downstairs, did he say we needed to reboot it or something? Do you remember?
Nothing? Okay, well, I guess we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. If Joni's able to join us, we will have to change from the usual vote to a roll call vote. Be the change. So, I'd like to call the meeting to order of May 9th, 2024.
Oh, she can hear us.
You can hear now?
Yeah.
Can we hear her?
Can?
Hello?
Oh, there you are, okay, roll call vote then. Thank you, Joni.
You're welcome.
With that, I'll call for approval of the April 11th minutes.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Joni, please.
Joni Truex, aye.
Dave Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, next order of business, it looks like KEDCO is up first. Good evening, Suzy.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, I have a report for you, and I think I've got enough, and...
We have copies, Suzy.
You do have copies?
Yeah.
Yep.
Perfect, then I won't pass them out. So I want to share with you, the report you have is the first quarter report for 2024, and that is a lot of KEDCO work that includes things that the county did not fund. But we want you to know about all of the good stuff that KEDCO is doing. The underhousing, things that we're working on that impact the county, you'll see it says site search analysis acronym, that is not accurate, it is actually Tippi Valley Schools. So we're working in Mentone. We are anxiously awaiting the new CEO who will be coming onboard June 10th. Her name is Peggy Friday. Between January 1 and March 31, Greg Fitzloff and I both served as the interim CEOs. Greg is now working on special projects, and we're really excited to have his help. You'll notice that the KEDCO staff has gotten much leaner. We are really fortunate that we have a very talented marketing and communications manager, Katie DeWitt. She manages all of our newsletters, social media, and website content and distribution. She supports the KEDCO events, special events and meetings, and she helps support the Help Coordinator quite a bit in the marketing that Help is doing. Dawn Wilkinson is our operations manager. She provides administrative support and manages the KEDCO office space. She coordinates financial and reporting processes. We're working with Whittle Accounting Group. They're our CFO, they are doing phenomenal job in keeping the KEDCO books balanced. KEDCO also maintains contracts with consultants, so Greg's work on special projects is a consultant job, and he is focused on specific community development entrepreneurship. We have another contract person, consultant, who is working on entrepreneurship, as well as Jessica Hauck, who is our talent initiatives person. She's going to be bringing recruiters in, so these are corporate recruiters that recruit for companies in Costasco County, but those recruiters don't especially know about all the great things that we have here in the county. So she's bringing them in at times when we have a lot of activity, so during the fat and skinny weekend, those folks are going to come in and see our community at its best, and we're pretty excited about the good work that Jessica is doing. So when it comes to business development, we're working closely with the Northeast Regional Partnership that serves an 11-county area, including Costasco County, and we're specifically working with them on business site development. So that, and plus all that you have on that paper, is our first quarter report. Be happy to answer any questions.
Have any questions or comments for Suzy? Joni, no?
I have a comment. I think we should be really proud of the KEDCO team for what they've done in the last six months. Between Whittle...
Five months.
Well, no, but even before that, with the Whittle team and bringing the recruiters in, because we did that last year also, Dawn had done that and taken them to different places and...
Dawn and Jessica both.
Yes, yes. And so, yeah, they really, you guys have really worked hard and...
Thanks, Kim.
Can seeing the tran, I can see the transformation from like six years ago, five, six years ago, to today, and it's been a really good, tough journey.
And we're really excited about the skills that Peggy's bringing to the table. She, we can't lose momentum. I wish I had realized 15 years ago how critical economic development is to our community, and looking at what do we want our community to be in 50 years? And the decisions that you make today impact our community for 50 years, and the growth that we're going to experience, and we will experience it. We're going to grow or we're going to die, and I get goosebumps when I think about that, because I want this to be a place where my grandkid wants to stay and live. So it needs to be the best it can be, and let's all work to get that way.
There you go.
I would just like to comment too, that I see, I really appreciate your report. I mean, it's much more detailed than what we've received in the past, and I just really appreciate it. I know you guys have been working hard, and you can tell by looking at this report, and I just want to thank you so much for coming in and going over it.
Yeah, and actually, even because I have been serving on KEDCO and serving on like the Finance Committee and so forth, and knowing that there were so many questions that the public were, they were asking, you know, three years ago, five years ago, and now, I believe with Whittle onboard, we're going to be able to make clear comments, and everything's going to be in the right, correct lane, for lack of a better term, so.
So rest assured, we're taking good care of your dollars.
Thank you, Suzy.
Thank you so much.
Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Barry Andrews. Good evening, Barry.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here for something hopefully pretty simple, just an additional, oh, I should probably put that in front of me, so you can...
Thank you.
...hear me and get my voice on that recording. Just for a simple additional appropriation for, out of our user fee account, for three tasers and four body cams. I think it was explained to you guys last week, the body cams, or this is a turnkey appropriation, everything's going to come with these, the body cams, as Tony politely reminded me last week, will be stored on the cloud, and they'll turn on automatically. Mr. Mulligan has taken really good care of us, so we're very thankful for that. So we're just here to get your blessing for that appropriation.
And are these going to be shared then, since there's only three?
Yeah, yeah, we're shaving, shaving money, saving money by doing that and being able just to share.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Dave Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Thanks, everybody, Barry, have a good night.
Next up, Gail Chapman, assessor. Good evening, Gail.
Good evening, Council. This should be pretty quick, too, this is the appropriation for the vehicle purchase. This will be the second one for our office, and hopefully we won't need any additional vehicles after that. These will last us for a long time. I think you guys received the final quote on the car. They did actually give us the demo that was sitting in their lot, so this car has 2,411 miles on it. They are giving us the full warranty of the balance of, well, not the balance, the full warranty on top of the 336, so we'll actually get 338.3, so they're going to give us the full warranty on it, and he did take an additional, I think, $909 off of it. I was thinking it was going to be closer around 32.5, so I think they gave us a really, a really good deal on the vehicle. Worked very, I love working with Ray Driver at Warsaw GMC, he's just a great professional guy, top-notch guy. So that's all I got for you at this point.
They've asked for $36,000, which includes lettering the vehicle and documentation.
Yes, I appropriated a little bit more, I wasn't sure what the final value on the car was going to be, and I know we'll have to get it lettered, I'm not, can't really remember what that cost, that was four years ago, so I'm sure like everything else, it's going to cost more, so that should be, 36 should be more than enough to do what we need to do for it and get it up and going.
I'll make a motion that we approve this up to $36,000 to purchase the vehicle, get it lettered and get it titled and so on.
Yep.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve up to $36,000. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Dave Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Thank you, Council, for your support, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Bob Weaver. Good evening, Bob.
Good evening. I'm here to ask for two appropriations from our Health First Indiana Fund, and to have those monies placed in the transfers that you see under that, so that we can use them.
So this is basically making the money available, so you can spend it?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any comments or questions for Bob?
Kathy, you have something?
Didn't know if you wanted me to go over the wage committee recommendations for this.
Yeah, why don't?
That would be great.
All right, the Wage Committee's recommendation for the Health First Indiana Secretary is that they approve the request for a part-time or full-time secretary for the Health First Indiana Grant, with the understanding that if the funding goes away, the position would go away. The second one would be like a pool specialist. The Wage Committee's recommendation is to approve one part-time position for that inspector for 2024, and the third thing would be a school liaison slash community nurse. The Wage Committee recommends the approval of the request for one full-time school liaison, community nurse for the future.
Now, I have a question on the liaison, do all these pertain that if the money goes away, the jobs go away? For all these positions or just the first one?
All of them.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Kathy, can you repeat what you said first? Did you say full and part-time?
Full or part-time. It started out going to be a part-time position, but it turned into a full-time position, trying to find qualified person to do the job.
Okay.
And that's for the HFI Secretary, right? Any additional questions or comments?
I would feel better if we knew if it was full or part-time.
It's full.
Full-time.
So you're clarifying tonight it's going to be a full-time position?
For the secretary, yes.
Okay.
She, she attended the Health, Indiana Health First meeting the other night, and she's got it all together. She is going to be great.
Yeah. Okay. I know her, I think she'll do a fine job.
Yes, I could see she, she presented everything in a very understandable manner, and, and she was just knew herself, but she, she could...
She caught on fast.
Yeah, yeah, I was, I was impressed, I was impressed.
Joni, does that answer your question then?
Yes, it does, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with, with that, maybe we had anything further, then I'll look for a motion.
Do you want to take these one at a time, Mr. President, or all at once?
Oh, what's your, what's your flavor, Council?
Probably maybe one, one at a time.
Let's do one at a time then, Toni.
I'll make a motion for the first one, for the part-time payroll and Social Security and Medicare.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Joni?
Okay, you said part-time, we just changed that to full-time, right?
No.
Oh, no, this is...
This, okay, so this is the first appropriation for other than the full-time, I believe, isn't it?
It's for the rest of the money.
It's for the rest of the staff.
So what are the positions that might come in the future, we can then make an account for them, yes.
Okay, all right.
So, Joni, can I just further explain? So what happened was, they have other things that they need to be doing, but we're holding them up because they're having to come back here to ask to spend the money. So they have to ask us, that Advisory Board meets, and then the Advisory Board tells the Health Board what they want to do, and then they can proceed with it. And it's just drug the whole thing down, I mean, poor Bob, you have to have gone crazy over trying to get this thing going, because it has been a sluggish process, and it's new, obviously, it's all new and trying to figure it out. So, I mean, we, we know that none of that money is ever going to be transferred unless it, it meets the qualifications of another employment. So, I mean, I, I can tell you, I'm comfortable that we do that, because between having this board, that board, and the other board, that money's never going to be spent wrong, in my humble opinion, so you got enough eyes looking at it.
Toni, would you like to restate your motion?
I mean, to break it down for this, additional appropriation for Health First Indiana, I move to approve the Social Security and Medicare, the amount of $22,402, and the part-time payroll, the amount of $162,094.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Toni, a second from Kathy. All those in favor, Joni?
Okay, I just have, I'm sorry, but I just have one more clarification question. Has this money been deposited, or is this money going to be deposited as it's spent from the state?
It's been there since January 2nd.
Okay, all right, Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay. Next, on to the Salary Ordinance Amendment.
I'll make a motion that we approve the Salary Ordinance Amendment for the HFI Secretary full-time at $40,872, and the HFI Pool Inspector part-time at $29.72 an hour.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye, and asking clarification, the part-time person is limited to 30 hours a week?
Less than 30.
Thank you.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, and next one up, we have a transfer Health First Indiana Fund, transfer of $31,674. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, next up is a transfer Health First Indiana Fund, transfer of $30,564.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this fund, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, next is transfer Health First Indiana Fund, transfer of $4,523.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Next is transfer Health First Indiana Fund, transfer of $30,180. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor, Joni?
Wait a minute, did you say $30,000 or $3,001?
$3,180.
Okay, I apologize, apologize.
Joni, please.
Joni Truex, aye on the $3,000.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
And that's it, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
And hey, Bob, I have a question then, I'm sorry.
Is the pool inspector just for public pools?
They'll be doing public pools and the public beaches.
But not private pools?
Seven lakes, semi-public and public.
Okay.
Pools.
Yeah, not, not the home.
Not private, not private.
And, and the fund balance is the $955,734, 74, is that what you see?
I don't, I don't know.
Okay, never mind.
Thank you, Bob. Next up, EMA, Kip Shooter. Good evening, Kip.
Good evening. First item of business is an additional appropriation for the HMGP grant, which is our Hazard Mitigation Grant, in the amount of $20,304. This was originally sought in 2023, but it took forever for the state to get their act together, and the mitigation department of IDHS to get us our contract, so it flowed over to 2024. So you guys had actually approved this appropriation mid-year last year, but now we're back again to do appropriation for 2024.
Okay, so the match includes the salaries of those people who are missing work to come here and do that kind of thing to make up for the match?
That is correct, to be in kind.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve $20,304 Multi-Hazard Mitigation Grant. Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay. Second item for me on your agenda is requesting permission to apply for the State Homeland Security Program grant. We're able to file for two of these, this is the first one, the second one will be coming to you later this month or next month. This one is for the amount of $149,481. Be for 12 security cameras to be placed around the exterior of the courthouse and the courthouse square, where there are none now. It'll tie into our current system, we're asking the state to provide this grant money for that. There is no match.
Okay. Is this a reimbursable grant then?
It is a reimbursement grant.
Reimbursable, okay.
So I'll come back before you for the additional appropriation later.
Okay, any additional questions or comments?
This is one you've applied for in the past, correct?
Yes.
Did you say that?
Yes.
Did they pay for the prior one, the prior cameras?
When we applied for this last year, we got denied, as about 90% of everybody else that applied did.
Okay.
All right, with that, I'll look for a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve applying for the grant.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve State Homeland Security Program grant of $149,481. Yes, $149,41. Joni, please.
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Thank you, Kip.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kip.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kip.
Okay, next up, Marsha McSherry, County Administrator. Good evening, Marsha.
Good evening. I have three transfers for you out of three different line items. It's all going into our grounds maintenance. The amount that we have in that fund right now is all budgeted, there's a total of $10,777 in that fund. Those dollars are spoken for, like I said, the ground maintenance includes the flowers, the beds, the maintenance of the roundabouts, weeding, those types of things, and this will pay for the mowing contract that we wanted to enter into. We're having trouble hiring a maintenance person, and we feel like it's our maintenance people, with their skill set, is better served with them working in the buildings on the HBAC, those types of things that come up instead of mowing the grass.
Any questions or comments from Marsha on that one? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Do you want us to go do each one individually, or you want to do the whole thing?
Let's do each one.
Okay, I'll make a motion for the first one, transfer County General Fund, $6,000 from maintenance building and equipment repairs to maintenance of grounds.
Second. We have a motion, Kathy, a second from Toni, to approve $6,000. Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, next, Marsha.
Next one is the same thing, $6,000 transfer from maintenance light bulbs, ballast, into maintenance of grounds with my projections, and neither one of these three accounts should run short at the end of the year by doing these transfers, so.
Thank you for telling us that.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Okay, and the last one.
Last one, maintenance repair parts, labor, transfer $6,000 to maintenance of grounds, and there's always an opportunity, a chance that we have a drought, we don't use that much money, but this is what we're projecting, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Toni Sirello, aye.
Thank you, Marsha, do you have anything else for us?
I do, if you have time for some updates, okay? All three of these projects are being paid for out of the ARPA funds. I'll start with the Justice Building renovation, we're, by the end of the month, we'll be closing out Phase 2, and if you remember, Phase 2 includes the Superior 1 Juvenile Courtroom, the judges' staff, and the lobby and hallways in that area. Looks like we probably will stay on target for timeframe as far as Phase 2. All the carpeting's done, the painting's all done, they're working on the three restrooms, laying tile down. I was over late this afternoon, two restrooms have the tiles down, they're not crowded, and there's one more to lay tile, so hopefully, may, hopefully maybe by the end of next week, those will be finished up, and then it'll be, just be a lot of little things that we have to clean up in that area. We've been able to move one, two of the staff members back to their offices to, to date, and CASA will have their panels reinstalled and their furniture next Tuesday, so hopefully by the end of the week, we may be able to move them back into their space, as long as everything else is finished up in that area.
Great.
Second project, ARPA funds as well, is the new fire alarm system in the courthouse. It will mimic the Justice Building Fire Alarm System that we recently installed last year with ARPA funds. This will be a audible system, unlike we've had in the courthouse before. We've always had to resort to the air horn, someone standing in the middle of the hallway, relying on weather radios that malfunction when you have an event, so it'll be nice to have something like that, so when that's completed, they say it'll take a month, then we'll have a test for just the courthouse employees, so they understand and know how that works.
Great.
Last project, which is also partially ARPA funds, is the Sydney Tower Site. This is a public, public safety communications project, this is the last of four towers to go up. The tower is up, the shelter was set last week, they're starting to put the equipment together at the vendor, they will test it, and then, once we have the electric and the ice bridge and cabling is done, and the dish is set, and a line... And then once we have the electric and the ice bridge and cabling is done and the dish is set and, um, aligned with the clay pool, then hopefully that system will be functional for that area as well, which will be a great thing for the people out in that area. Police, fire, EMS, whenever they have anything in that area, that will help their communication greatly. So we'll be wrapping that up hopefully by the middle of June.
Great.
Marsha, I have a question about the cameras outside.
Mm-hmm.
Did we not approve something in ARPA for those as well, or am I thinking wrong?
Well, we talked about it because we wanted to get them done sooner than later, as far as especially the work that goes, because everything, the cable, the, the, uh, fiber and everything has to be run through the ground. So this pro, this grant doesn't get approved until like the end of August. So we were tentatively looking at that. But we have, uh, from SISA, they're coming in Monday afternoon to do a, uh, security assessment. So it's my understanding, if we have that security assessment to submit with our grant, that will greatly increase our chances of it all being approved. So yes, that's kind of the backup to this, once we get there. But, um, this is the second year, and I believe the, uh, quotes that I got last year and the ones I got this year updated for, to be submitted with a grant, I think probably a total of not over ten thousand increased as far as dollars from one year to the next, trying to push this out and get something approved.
Great. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Marsha.
Thank you, Marsha.
Next on the agenda, we have Auditor Rhonda Helsler.
Okay, so I'm here presenting, um, for the Sheriff's Department of Vehicle Replacement Perp, Appropriation Adjustment Request for nineteen thousand eight eighty-one sixty-eight.
Okay, any questions or comments on this one?
We have the copies there in front of you.
I move we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Uh, all those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
Okay.
And then you should have the, um, April twenty, twenty-four encumbering for three thousand five fourteen thirty-five. And I had Alyssa in our office break it down into the, um, the funds, so you could see those.
Okay.
That's very helpful, to be able to see.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, Alyssa.
Do we have a motion on the encumbering?
I move we approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the encumbering. Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
Okay, thank you, Rhonda. Okay, next up, our Wage Committee Recommendations. Now, this will be just for twenty twenty-four, correct?
Correct.
Things that need to be done right now?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Yeah, a couple of things for the sheriff's office. Um, one of them is, is we need to change the title. Um, they have a captain's position right now in their account, and they don't need that position, but they are desperate for a deputy. So they're requesting, and the Wage Committee has recommended, to approve the request to change the captain to a deputy. Um, the other thing that they also have is another title change. Um, we have a sergeant deputy, and we would like to change it to a training slash special ops lieutenant. And the Wage Committee has, uh, recommend, recommends to approve that request as well. It will, both of these changes are better in line with the current sheriff and the work he's trying to do and the, you know, that, that kind of thing. Um, so the Wage Committee recommends both of those, uh, changes.
And the money's there to cover.
The money is there, and the money's also there to cover the, because the, the pay from the sergeant to lieutenant is a little bit more. So the, the overage from the captain to the deputy will help cover that too. So there's no extra money at all.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, to, to approve. Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
Okay, and then, and then I have the
Thanks, Chris.
Salary ordinance amendment. Let's see, let's do this one first. Okay, this is for, it says, um, Casas County Council adopted the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. This amendment is to change the title and wage on the position from captain to deputy. This position was vacated, and the sheriff would like to use the position for a deputy. And then it lists, do I need to read the amounts?
Yeah.
Okay, so, um, account number's one zero one one two, title would be deputy in the sheriff's budget. Um, annual salary sixty thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars, bi-weekly would be two thousand three hundred and six dollars and forty cents. Hourly is twenty-eight dollars and eighty-three.
Any further questions on this one? If not, look for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
And then I have a salary ordinance amendment for the second request for the sheriff's office. So it says the Casas County Council adopted the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Wage Committee approved the change, to change the title of this position. This amendment is to change the title and wage on the position from sergeant slash deputy to training slash special ops lieutenant. And this is account number one 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 five three in the sheriff's account. It's, uh, training slash special ops lieutenant. Annual wage is seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, bi-weekly would be two thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars and forty cents, and hourly would be thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents.
Any questions?
I have one.
I, is this a new hire or is this simply a transfer we've already got?
It's a employee we already have. It's like a promotion.
It's a promotion of the current sergeant to that position.
Yeah.
And the money is covered by the money that they used to have for the captain's position. Yeah, none of these Dave are, are any new hires. It's just basically moving things around, for what they have available.
And it's the same pay as a lieutenant across the board, so. And it, there's no additional money involved. Yes, Joni?
It's not a question, just a comment. When you say the Wage Committee approved, it honestly is the Wage Committee recommends approval.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just saying you should put that in there for the minutes. Instead of approves, it should be recommends approval.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, let's make note of that, Rhonda. The Wage Committee recommends approval. Thank you. Okay, with that, did we have a motion?
I think there was a motion and a second.
I motioned, I don't know who seconded.
Let's do it again.
I make a motion to approve the Wage Committee Recommendation on the Training Special Operations Lieutenant. Annual salary seventy-one thousand five hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Thirty-one.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one more thing for the Wage Committee. It's a title change for Title Four D. Um, they used to have a, a case manager team lead. They do not need that currently, but they do need a caseworker. So, um, the request was to change account number one 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 five from case manager team lead to caseworker. And the Wage Committee recommends to approve that request to change that title for that account.
And Kathy, that wage has been adjusted then to what every other person is doing the similar work backwards.
Yes, yes, that's correct.
Any questions on this one? If not, we'll look for a motion.
So moved. So moved.
We have a motion, we have a motion, a second, to approve. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
And then I have the salary ordinance amendment document. Um, the Count, Casas County Council adopted the twenty twenty-four salary ordinance on October twelfth, twenty twenty-three. On March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, the Wage Committee recommended approval to change the title of this position. This amendment is to change the title on the position for case manager team leader to caseworker. The wages are changing from a comment two-three to a comment two-one as it is a new employee in this position. Um, and the account number is one 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 five out of the Title Four D account, title caseworker. Um, and the annual salary is thirty-nine thousand nine hundred and ten dollars, bi-weekly would be one thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-five cents, hourly twenty dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, any questions on this one? If not, I'll look for a motion.
Did you say that was a new position? It's not a new position. It's a new employee, a new hire. So is it a replacement of someone that left, or is it? Yeah, just, just changing it from a leader to a caseworker, so. Thank you. Yeah.
Any additional questions? If not, look for a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, Kathy and Sue Ann. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walken's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.
Tony Sorillo, aye.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Can I make a comment really quick? I just want to publicly thank Kathy for doing such a good job. There was, uh, um, we just had a whole lot of things to go through, and she did a really great job organizing this so that it makes sense. And I just want to publicly say thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, we're down to the, toward the end of the meeting. Any further business to come before the council?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, Mike.
No, go ahead, Joni.
Uh, redevelopment commission met today, and with the commissioners' pre-approval, are recommending to the commissioners to increase the redevelopment commission from five members to seven, which if approved by the commissioners, and they will have to add an, an amendment to their original creation of the redevelopment commission, that would mean four people will be appointed by the commissioners and three people will be appointed by the council. And this will not be effective until January first, twenty twenty-five, per the commissioners' request. That we wait till then, and they are in favor of it, but we needed to get it in our minutes as a request to send to them to act upon.
Okay. All right, any questions for Joni on this? Yeah, I had a question. The terms are for one year, is that correct now?
Yes, sir. And the
Is there a reason for that?
They've always been one year, Dave, but there has been an amendment in the IC code that they can go up to three years. However, this is where it gets tricky. If I had been assigned for three years, I'm only going to serve one year because I'll be off the council, and I don't feel that I will have the wherewithal and knowledge of what's going on in the community to be a contributing person on the redevelopment commission moving forward. So there has been some conversation on the redevelopment commission. However, it would have to be staggered terms, and we're thinking that we would wait, they would wait until twenty twenty-five or twenty twenty-six. They're just thrilled that they can increase to seven because that will help with getting a quorum there. And it would also help with, uh, spreading out the projects a little more.
Okay, makes sense.
And I would, I would think that the staggered terms would really be helpful because you'd have someone with continuity instead of always having a new person. I mean, it would, it would seem like that would be, you know, by the time you get your year in, you know, you're just learning. So I'm glad they're considering that, um, because I would think that they would want a staggered type of committee.
If they decide to pursue that in twenty-five or twenty-six, again, that will have to go before the commissioners, and there would have to be a change. And it was discussed today whether we should try to do that in twenty-five, and it was decided that they're happy with going to seven. They think that'll solve the problems short term. And even though they're one-year terms, a lot of people are just asked to continue. And the, in a perfect world, the commissioner or the county administrator would contact each person and ask them if they were going to continue. And in the past, that hasn't happened. Um, and the same with the council, would reach out to each person individually and ask if they want, wish to continue, unless there was some reason not to. And like I said, in a perfect world, that would happen, and then everybody would know. Because I know for the start of twenty-four, people weren't sure if they were on or off because nobody contacted them. So it was like, well, no news is good news. I guess I'm staying on. And we have to do an oath every year anyway, just so you know that.
As far as the council concerned, is concerned, I can assure you, they were contacted, the ones that we were responsible for, because I, you and I exchanged those emails.
Yeah, I'm saying the commissioners were not. So. It just would be nice since they're volunteering their time if they were asked.
I think Marsha, I didn't hear Marsha, but she said she contacted them as well.
Okay, that, thank you, Joni. Uh, anything else?
I would, I would like to add this. Uh, so, so, uh, we received, the council received, um, just recently, actually today, I think. Yeah, today's May ninth, um, a letter from the governor's office and the, um, talking about, um, the, well, from the Director of Treasury and Revenue. And they're talking about the, um, wheel tax collection and allocation. And that, not that we're saying we're going to change it, but this is the situation for us before September first. Anything that's going to be effective in twenty twenty-six has to be decided, excuse me, by twenty twenty-five has to be decided this year. So I just wanted to share that, that we got this, and we, we may have to have a committee meeting at some point just to review it. Not saying that we're going to take steps to go forward and do anything with it, but, um, it's actually, these, um, the things that we would decide this year would never take effect until January first, twenty twenty-six. So that's why we really need to sit and look at it and do an evaluation, so.
Okay. All right, anything else to come before the council? Well, after report, after this, yeah, then we'll do reports. Any further?
Joni, did you need us to make, I'm so sorry.
For Dan.
Did you need us to make a recommendation or anything for your, okay.
No.
No, the press is popping a bit to add something here.
FYI, that's all that was.
Okay, thank you.
Dan?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dan Spalding with News Now Warsaw. So you're two months into this test run with the pre-council meetings, and I'm curious to get a little reaction and thoughts on how you're feeling about it.
Well, actually, I just made a note that in future, uh, working sessions, uh, reviews, that if we have an update from a, say, KEDCO, for example, tonight, I don't feel we need to air it twice. So I would like to eliminate that portion of it at our, at our agenda review.
So just to bring it to the public meeting?
Yeah, and that's just, that's just the note I made here tonight.
Right.
Because it forced Suzie to be there twice. We heard the same exact thing. So unless we have something of, of a financial nature that we need to discuss, I think that portion could be eliminated.
Well, and a lot of times, um...
That's my personal opinion. That is not the opinion of the council.
Well, but, and a lot of times, they get us the information. If anybody comes from the outside, they get us information, so we're able to review it. So if we have questions, we can reach out, and then they can bring it to the council meeting, which would probably be really logical.
It's definitely a work in progress, Dan, because the first one was interrupted by a fire alarm. And the second one was a little better, uh, but we're, I've, I've heard positive feedback.
And the first one, the audio didn't work if you were, uh, remote.
Yes, yes.
I have a comment. I, the first one was very beneficial for me. Uh, I felt very comfortable at the meeting last time. I totally blew off and slept one last week, which I did not intend to do, and I've been promised I will be reminded by about four council members next time that I'll be at the next one. But I thought it was very good. I was very pleased.
I think it's been really great, too. It's, I mean, I, I always met beforehand, so I felt like I was prepared. But even just having that extra meeting to get more fuller information and, and have all the information so far ahead of time has been really helpful, I think.
I think it's been good. I mean, it gives me a chance to, for a week, to go over in my head what we're going to discuss tonight to make sure I know where I stand.
And, and prior to that, I mean, back in the day, I know when, at least when I came on council, I would basically just do the same thing with Rhonda for two years, just go the week before and, and
And that's what, that's what Kathy and I were doing.
And it, so it's really great, though, that I think that we're doing it like more as a group and kind of collectively. And so, um, because I know And so, because I know Sue Ann did that, and Joni did that, and so it's, it's kind of nice that we're kind of getting on board and.
We, we just tried to, I, I think, I think Kathy and I are trying to bring it, make it kind of more of a team effort, because really, we were the only ones reviewing the, the agenda beforehand, and there's things that we would miss, things that we wouldn't think about. And I think bringing other council members to the table kind of lessens that to.
Plus, I think it's also really helpful to have other people, you know, who are present to ask questions, too, because you learn a lot from what other people, you know, from the questions that other people ask.
And this is open to the public.
That you might not think of asking.
So anyone can come.
And, and that fits my saying, no one of us is as smart as all of us.
Right, yes. Thank you.
But Mike, I would like to say that those of us who didn't go and meet with Rhonda did go over the agenda and all of the items and ask any questions of the department heads.
Exactly.
Before the meeting. So it wasn't just you two doing that. We were doing it on our own.
Sure, I get that, but, but it's always nice for everybody to be in the same room and have first-person reaction.
Right.
You know, to whatever's being talked about, because something that you talk about, Joni, might cause me to talk about something, you know, or, or cause me to ask a question I wouldn't even think about.
I, I would like to be able to ask questions attending virtually instead of having to text them to Sue Ann. That would be nice.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Dan.
What do you, what do you guys think?
Personally, on a personal note, I like it, because the official meeting tonight is a little more efficient, a little quicker, and I get home faster.
I'm glad you noticed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and with that, would anybody like to share, you know, reports or what you've been working on the past month?
I got nothing, Mayor Board moved, got moved to next week.
Okay. Dave, anything to add?
Solid Waste Board, the amnesty is going very, very well. They've had tons of people show up, get things out of the reuse, reuse thing, and it's working very well, and they're going to continue it for a while.
Great. Sue Ann?
On March the 15th, April the 15th, April the 15th, I attended the County Health Board to explain budgets and how this whole health first money was working. And then, I think we all attended, or some of us attended, on 416, the KEDCO parking meeting, trying to ID the needs of parking downtown. And then I had a role here, and on 417 was the ARPA meeting. And with that, we were trying to pull together the last of where we were at with spending, and so we have a better picture. And we will be taking pictures. Each one of us took a, a few of those nonprofits to go out and take pictures, so that we can put together some kind of a document in order to share with the public what we did with that money, in the hopes that people will feel like we spent it well. That was, that would be the goal. And then on the 6th of May, we had the actual Health First meeting that should have been held on the 22nd of April. And at that one, we went over a lot of the things that we, we looked at this evening. So they're making progress. It's, it's a tedious process, because there are so many things in those core values that the Health First program is expecting, and so it's. It's just a lot of talk. Great, great people, though, working on that committee. It's, and it's been a real education, so.
Kathy?
I've attended a lot of things, but the only reports I'm going to report on are for MACOG and Warsaw Main Street, and both of those involve the FAT and Skinny Tire Festival. So the month of May is a National Bike Month, and Bike to Work Week is May 13 through the 19th, so it's culminating in the Warsaw FAT and Skinny Tire Festival, and I just want to promote it and just, because it's such a big deal, it's actually a really big deal in the state. I think this is like the biggest bike festival in the state, I, I could be wrong, but I think for the state of Indiana, I think it's one of the biggest things. So anyways, I just wanted to throw a, you know, like, a little mention on that and remind people to check that out and get involved. If you need any information, you can just Google Warsaw FAT and Tire, Skinny Tire Fest, and that'll get you right to where you need to go. And then the other thing I wanted to tell you about from MACOG is that there's going to be a call for projects that will be coming this summer, and it's an HSIP-eligible systematic improvement call, and that involves safety. And basically, this is a new thing, that's why I'm telling you about it. It's not a typical grant that people have applied for in the past, and it's, it's, it involves safety on the roads, it's open to all different communities, so anybody can apply, and it's for like fast and quick, easy improvements that you could potentially do. And it's not out yet, but like, the way these grants work, you really kind of have to have that stuff, you know, figured out ahead of time. So examples of things that you could use it for would be like striping, road striping, things that will improve safety, like the, the signs that tell you how fast you're going is another example. So if you have any safety things, a smaller community that you, you know, are interested in, you could contact MACOG, and they can, you know, help you, get you ready, so that when that actually comes about, you're ready and you can apply for it. And that's pretty much it.
Okay. This last month, I guess I, I was with Sue Ann, Carrie on the ARPA committee, and like Sue Ann said, we've decided to go out and visit to see where some of these and how some of these funds are being used, and then we hope to put together a report. Area plan, attended that last week. We approved two plats, one final, one preliminary. We sent a unfavorable or a recommendation to deny a vacation in Atwood, and we tabled a zoning change up on 1350 North, I believe. That's about it, other than trying to dodge raindrops. With that. Joni, do you have anything additional to add?
Did Kim go?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Just the Redevelopment Commission today.
Okay.
And I reported on the important thing you need to know, otherwise, we just reviewed the same report we reviewed with the commissioners and the council, and looked at TIF districts, and that was about it.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anna Therson? Kim?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought you were cutting our gate, you were starting off, that was a different report.
Sorry, sorry.
No, that's okay. So KEDCO actually met a couple of different times, but I'm not going to go into it. Susie pretty much covered everything, and I'm pretty happy with the direction it's going. The, there's also a virtual town hall that's put on by the Indiana Office of Technology, and that's on May 14th. If anybody's interested, we, you can contact us, and we'll get you the information. And there was another meeting, I'm looking for it, I apologize. Oh, no, Ready 2.0 is going to have an organizational meeting. I just thought I would just announce that. So KEDCO is helping to allow people to come in for a submissions workshop, and it's going to be May 14th. So it's Ready 2.0. It's the monies that come from the state and federal governments. So it's the Regional Economic Acceleration and Development Initiative, and it's through the Northeast Indiana Strategic Development Commission. And so it will be hosted at the Kasecasco Chamber on the 14th at 10 o'clock, 10 to 11:30. So that's kind of important, and hopefully, we'll have some people attending to work on their project submissions for Ready 2.0.
So that's a workshop for the, for the submissions?
It's for the submissions for economic development, any projects, so it's open. You just have to register.
Okay, so in other words, like, if you're not, if you're not going to be submitting a project, then you don't need to.
Correct, except for the fact that it probably would be very informative if you were in that arena. And so I'm going to try, try and get there and make sure that I'm paying attention, just because I'm on the KEDCO board, so.
I put it on my calendar, but. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Tony, nothing additional? Okay, last call, anything else? If not, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, Joni?
Joni Truex, aye.
Walkin's aye.
Sue Mitchell, aye.
Kathy Groninger, aye.
Mike Long, aye.
Kimberly Cates, aye.